My name is Paul Caden. I live in Otis. I've been a volunteer with the Salmon and Drift Creek Watershed Council. We getting feedback?
No.
With the Salmon and Drift Creek Watershed Council for about 13 years. And during that time, I've worked on a lot of projects with Paul and before him Lori Campbell, who was the manager, on many projects to improve water quality in the lake and conditions to improve salmon habitat in the lake and the tributaries. Today, I want to comment on a new business item you have on your agenda today that will, I think, will critically impact Rock Creek and Devil's Lake. This item on your agenda is 5B, which deals with Senator Wyden's draft legislation to increase timber harvests on what is commonly referred to as ONC lands. The particular impacts of this bill on Devil's Lake and its main tributary, Rock Creek, could potentially be devastating. I urge you to ask Senator Wyden to make changes to his bill. As the legislation stands today, and will probably come before the Senate sometime this session, it proposes to take large portions of Skuna Creek and Rock Creek, of the Skuna Creek and Rock Creek watersheds, which are presently part of the Tsayuslo National Forest and managed by the Forest Service, and turn them over to the Bureau of Land Management, BLM. Then these lands would be to be designated forest emphasis areas or conservation emphasis areas, and which would happen is not really clear at this time. If they became forest emphasis areas, they would be aggressively logged with significant reductions in environmental protections like stream riparian zones. That would severely impact the quantity and quality of water getting into Rock Creek and into the lake. The ONC land grant act of 2015, as it's been recently relabeled, it says 2014 on your agenda, proposes to take about 300,000 acres currently managed by the Forest Service and turn it over to BLM. One reason for doing this is because the Forest Service lands are managed under the Northwest Forest Plan, and the purpose is to develop late, and only thinning is allowed, no clear cutting, and the purpose is to develop late succession reserves, mature old growth forests. Under BLM, harvest rules would be much different, and the clear cutting would be allowed. In addition, under Wyden's bill, environmental regulations have weakened, as I just said, that is, like smaller riparian zones. All of this could lead to more sediment and nutrients getting into Devil's Lake, and east Devil's Lake wetland, and obviously, Rock Creek as well. Like the actions taken by the city last Monday, I think you should let Senator Wyden know that you oppose this plan to move these lands, these watersheds, to the Forest Service management under BLM management. That is, keep this land under Forest Service management. You need to keep him aware of your concerns, keep the dialogue going, and stay on top of this issue. When this bill comes before Congress, nobody really has any idea, and just what it will look like when it comes before Congress is completely unknown, especially with the new Congress has its own mind on what they would like to do, and it's all a big unknown. But you're gonna need, I really suggest you stay on top of it and follow it, and try to keep that dialogue going with Senator Wyden. I also suggest you talk with Senator Wyden and his environmental people, excuse me, Senator Merkley and his environmental people. Let his staff know your feelings, and maybe he could be an ally in this, in this dealing with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caden. Noel Walker. Oh, you're not, you want to speak, Noel?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you didn't circle a little yes up here. That's all right.
I usually want to.
I figured.
Okay. I just gotta put these out here. This is hard to see, but that's all crap. This is the greatest number of my propellers that got damaged this year. There's a few missing because of the fact that they're taken often, so. Since I have, this is, oh, by the way, I live at 4006 Devil's Lake Road.
You're gonna have to get to the mic first.
Okay. My name's Noel Walker. I live at 4006 West Devil's Lake Road. Most people know the place as Blue Heron Landing, which is a boat rental. in this lake. Really? Okay. I'm done now. Tell you that there's a lot of damage done to propellers in this lake on a yearly basis, always have been for that matter. It's not a, it's not a very deep lake, but because we're now lowering the average lake level in the summer, this becomes more common. Now, since I have a boat rental, I try to get economy props because I expect them to get damaged over time, but there are many people out there that have extremely expensive stainless steel crop, or props, four blade, et cetera. Some cost five and $600. These are only 125 a piece. As I said earlier, I have a couple that are missing because an entire blade was knocked off. Most of these were damaged in the south end of the lake, but some were not. I, I got into the habit of instructing my staff to tell people when they showed them how to operate a boat, where to stay clear of. And there's a few places in the lake, as a matter of fact, right out in front of Regatta Park, I sometimes get readings of four and five feet. So, we tell them, but there's a lot of people that come here not expecting any problems. There's certainly nothing to tell them that it's a very shallow lake, and they do a lot of damage to their boats. And I would imagine if I went to a lake and that happened to me, and I lost a big prop and ruined my weekend, or week of vacation, that I probably wouldn't want to come back. And so, what I'm here to tell you is, I think it would be, since we're supposed to be promoting recreation on the lake, that I think you should adopt some kind of a program to clear up some of the problem areas where you hit snags, things, you know, that are down on the bottom. And possibly, and I brought this up once when I was on the board, trying to get the sheriff's office to mark some places like the island down on the south end, well away from what you can see, it's very shallow. I've had many boats and seen other boats stuck there, and, and their props damaged. I think that should be marked. Now, I was told before that perhaps they didn't want to do that because then it would admit, it would be admitting that they know that there's a problem there, but we need to, we need to save people the damage that occurs. So, I would hope you'd do something to perhaps get some of these places cleared up so we don't have this sort of thing happen. Okay, that's it.
You got a pretty good idea where these spots are, Noel?
Well, I don't know where a lot of them are, but you can, you can pretty much go by your topo maps and figure out some. Leisure Bay, there's an area you can see as you're traveling over that point, it's well out into the water where you can actually see the bottom. A lot of people don't have a clue that that's there. I know it's there, and I tell people to stay away, but, and then, of course, the south end is absolutely treacherous. A lot of people like that island, they like to go around it.
Yeah.
And it just does a lot of damage, and if you just had a marker there that said caution, shallow, you know, they would perhaps be more cautious. But this can ruin your, this can ruin your vacation if you bring your boat and you don't know where to get a prop, you know? That's it.
Noel, before you go, I don't know anything about boating, as you well know, but we have a little place out on the slits, and as you're navigating down on the slits, people have marked with floats, you know, where all of the snags are. Is that not a viable option, or?
I don't think a person has the right to do that, and if you recall, I did, I did bring that up at a meeting, and you checked with the police, and they said they hadn't had enough complaints to do anything. We had figured at the time that perhaps they didn't want to mark it because that admitted knowledge. For you, I don't think I could have, I could go out there and mark an area. Someone would take it.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Thank you, Noel. Mitch Moore.
Okay.
Well, you can clear that away, Noel, that's fine.
Mitch Moore, 2929 Northeast Loop Drive.
We don't want to start your time yet, Mitch, so.
Okay.
All right.
Doesn't bother me. What Noel failed to mention is that his, this is definitely more than he used to have when the lake was higher. I think that's why he's here tonight. Would that be true statements?
Absolutely.
Okay, so. So, 953 would have some impact on it as well, so it's another option. So, I'm here to talk about the removal of, or the proposed removal of the impoundment structure. And I, listening to the discussion, it seems like the biggest element of justification for looking at this is really the sandbar that is at the mouth of the river and the seagulls that are on it and so forth. But the discussion about this has been primarily about the foundation of the dam. So, I'm kind of suggesting perhaps that maybe the project should be renamed the Sandbar Abatement Project, and maybe from that perspective, some other potential solutions may come about rather than just focusing on the dam. I don't disagree with a review on the sandbar. We know, though, that the sandbar's been around, it's been a constant fixture since the 30s and even before that. But I question, so I question the urgency of the proposed solution because this has been around, but we should potentially look at it. We've talked about it for several years, so I have no problem with that. I'd like to suggest that first and foremost, though, let's get the water right addressed and get the lake impound to 953 this year by installing the impoundment structure early enough in the season that we have success, where last year, we failed with that. Then we can move on to whatever else you might want to take a look at on this, but there's no need for the structure to be pulled out to test the new structure. Perhaps you can get the permits for that, put it in front of the existing one, see how it performs over a season, and then think about removal in a subsequent season. Also, if we're looking at this about the sandbar, then perhaps we can revisit actually physically removing some of the sand. I know that's been talked about year after year, and it's usually kind of dismissed with the, oh, it can't be done, but I mean, I don't know that we've actually really made a real effort to remove it, potentially, you know, for, there's probably a lot of good reasons to do it, and if a reasoned project was put forward, it might be possible we could get a permit for that. So, enough on the dam. The second thing I'd like to reference is the RFP. There were about four options that were given in the staff report about the RFP, which we know came back without any responses. I'd like to encourage the board to have it, review it, redraft it, put it out. I've put a lot of jobs out to bid in my career, and usually when you don't get many or you don't get any responses, it's a problem with, with the job, or else people are really, really busy in that particular market. But from what I understand, this has been an issue with, with concerns over the level of liability and the level of what we, we were asking, and it was beyond what maybe this could do. So, let's throw that back out there. I would also encourage that you don't do the direct assignment, maybe look at the split, and certainly don't give up on it yet. It's way too early to do that, and just look at the long-range projects. So, that's pretty much the sum of what I have to say tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Mark Christie.
Mark Christie, 3184 Northeast Loop Drive. I just want to talk for a moment also about the Aeration Project, and I'm assuming, and we'll hear you guys chat a little bit later tonight, that you're probably, you're disappointed that we didn't get any responses. I know in Paul's manager's report, he shared a couple paragraphs of some feedback. One was fairly detailed and technical, one was a little simpler. And I've got another one here because I reached out to someone by the name of Eli Hirsch from Aquatic Environments, and this explanation actually is a pretty simple one, I think maybe encapsulates the two in a easy-to-understand way. And the question was responding to, why didn't you, you know, respond to the RFP? I can respond to the board that we did not bid in the end. Ultimately, we could not assume the liability that the RFP demanded. It required us to obtain a bond on the design stating that it would eliminate harmful algal blooms and make permanent changes to the water chemistry. As, as we discussed, not realistic expectations. So, again, what I would encourage you to do, as Mitch said, I think this is very important. You guys also believed it was very important. I don't believe we're at a point we should stop. I think we need to relook at the RFP, development, develop it in a format, and if that means reaching out to some of these folks and engaging them and asking them, I mean, bringing them in for a work session to ask them, hey, how should we structure this so that you would take a look at this and bid on this for us to help, you know, the lake basically improve? I would recommend that you strongly go back, look at this, and re-put it out so that we can get more information on whether this project makes sense and will accomplish what we at least all think that it might. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christie.
Thank you.
Mark. That's the end of people who have signed up. Does anyone else like to speak? All right, there being none, we'll move on to our unfinished business. Devil's Lake Plan, septic and sewer. Go ahead.
All right, thank you.
Take the lead.
So, well, yeah, I mean, the, the issue of getting septic around Devil's Lake is really kind of the larger bit here with what we're focused.
That would be sewer, right?
Sewer, we've got septic around.
We've got septic.
That was easy, we did it.
You want to go home?
Yeah, sorry about that. So, to, you know, get sewer on the lake to replace this existing septic systems is kind of a larger issue, which a septic inspection program will help drive. I was actually speaking with the new city manager just tonight before our meeting, and we're just kind of relaying to him some of the things that we've done to date, you know, as a community, largely driven by the city, as far as getting the sewer master plan updated, that's in process, and then getting this, the review of the sewer technology as well into that. So, that's ongoing and supposedly supposed to be done by April 2015. So, that was a nice conversation, I just like to, you know, just relay that. But, so those are, so those are the bigger things. What's really kicking it off, though, is to you, Mr. Green, private citizen Green, and the efforts of the local Voyage Lake LID, which, you know, I would just turn over to you if you want to review what, what they did last Monday.
All right. Yeah, so they had the public hearing on the new LID, which basically, I think, as you know, eliminated the Lake Cove Drive area, which consisted of about 15 out of the 60 lots that were included. And the nice thing about this is that the city staff has really had time to kind of cross their Ts and dot their Is and learn a lot really between the first approval and what I hope will be the, the second approval. We don't have, we don't, I can't say it's approved yet because the hearing was continued at, at the request of staff who wanted to, I think for one thing, there was a notice problem. They, they didn't send one of the notices by certified mail or something, and they had, also needed some time for some other issues. One of the, one of the good things that's maybe come out of the delay is that the city is, looks like they're, they're going to try to, to provide financing for every part of the, of the hookup from, we knew that they have to provide it for the initial part, the paving and the laying the sewer lines, but they have found some financing available through DEQ. DEQ makes a loan to the city, the city passes it, you, well, can use the money then to, to do the hookups when people decide to hook up from the street to their home. DEQ has a financing program for that, and, and then the city is also willing to finance the SDC charges now that they weren't initially, so, so basically, all three pieces, the initial hookup, the SDC charge, and the, the hookup to the home. It looks like all of that can be financed if the property owner, so he lacks, at extremely reasonable interest rates in the, in the 2% to 3% range. So, that's, I think that's pretty much the highlights. The, it comes up again on March 9th, and hopefully, there was, there was only one opponent and one proponent at the, at the last city council meeting. And so, I think, I'm hoping we get approval on March 9th. There's going to be a little bit more delay because some of these financing programs are kind of tied to this, to both the city and the state budget cycle. So, but the city is talking like if approved, that they will be able to construct it in 2015. So, so there we are.
Brian, weren't there three financing vehicles at play there?
Yeah.
With some type of a 90 day, or three-year opportunity window to get in at the?
Yeah, I think the, the three, the three-year limit was on the, if you hook up within three years, the DEQ program lasts for three years, so DEQ will finance the, the street-side improvements, the, the hookup from the property line to the house, including the pump, which is, that, that piece is about $10,000. And DEQ will finance, but there's a, there's a three-year limit on the timeframe in which they'll do that. From the time that the project is completed, there'll be three years for people to hook up to take, and they'll be able to take advantage of that. If they hook up after three years, they won't have that piece of the financing available. The way I read the report, I think that the SDC financing, it sounded like it was available, I hope I'm not wrong about this, but I think that was available indefinitely. Oh, no, for property owners who, no, wait a minute now. I'm not sure. The SDC financing might also be only available for three years also. The, if you do, if you do the elect to do it, and you do it within three years, the, the financing timeframe for, for two of those segments is 20 years, and I think the other one is 10.
Mm-hmm.
So, that sound right to you?
Yeah. You know, you're pretty much the expert on this, and this is a pioneer program. How do you see this bleeding out to the rest of the lake?
Well, I, you know, for one thing, I see the, the city being able to, you know, learn, you know, how this, how this works and what, what the potential pitfalls are on a relatively small scale. You know, one of the issues has always been, you know, if you, if you don't have enough people hooking up right away, then you're going to have stagnant stuff in your lines, and it becomes septic, and it does damage at the other end, at the treatment plant. But what I've been told lately is that there's a, a solution to that, they just flush the lines there periodically. Another nice piece of this that the city has, has come up with is that if the property owner will simply give the city permission to come on its, on, on to their property, the city will do the maintenance. And when I asked the assistant, kind of the, one of the city engineers about that, because there wasn't any mention of whether the, the city would charge for that, but he said he thought that the city would not. So, I don't, maybe that hasn't been decided, but it's looking like, I think the city wants to be in control of the maintenance and repair, and these, these pumps and these systems are pretty low maintenance anyway, so I think the city's just willing to do it and not have to worry about people signing up with, you know, 10 different maintenance providers and having 10 different maintenance systems and the problems that that might occasion, So, I think we're finally getting that back into gear, and hopefully, we'll have our pilot program in place, at least the lines in place by, by the end of this year sometime. So, does anybody have any, any more questions about the, the LID thing itself?
No questions.
The, the septic inspection ordinance, it's just, you know, I, I talked to city folks and... The septic inspection ordinance, it's just, you know, I talked to city folks and they seem to be reasonably interested in getting that done and then nothing happens. Paul, is there any, is there anything new?
Well, no. You know, the last real direction from the city at the city council level was August 2013. And that was, let's see, a draft septic inspection program. And that hasn't happened. So, you know, priorities of the city are multifaceted and, you know, I don't know what other, what reasons that may or may not be associated with why that hasn't come to be, but I think it's certainly ripe with the new council and a new city manager to just, you know, re-energize that process and see if in fact that is still a priority for them. I know that they've been doing their prioritization and, you know, we may hear a little bit more about that at one of their upcoming meetings. But I know we've heard from a couple city councilors, I know Susan Walkie, Councilor Walkie, about her interest in sewer-ing the lake. And it was really the previous mayor, Mayor Anderson, that came up with this kind of idea of get a septic inspection program, pass it, put it on the shelf, deal with your sewer infrastructure, and that's been going. We talked about that earlier as far as like, you know, what the needs were for getting the sewer there. You needed to get the sewer master plan updated, you needed to get the environmental review of that system done, those are to be done in April. So, you know, ideally, April would be a good time to have a septic inspection program on the shelf already too. And from that, you know, I think you even have more opportunity to get at either grant or loan dollars, grant from the USDA was spoken about, DEQ loan dollars, to help subsidize with some state or federal dollars, the infrastructure needs of basically Niatus, the east side of the lake, you know, to get around the lake with a backbone sewer. So, yeah, I think it's just another, you know, time to, you know, be in communication with those folks. And I think one-to-one direct communications with councilors is always good, board members, directors to councilors, that's a very positive way. Kip, feel free to talk to yourself, talk yourself into this idea. But kidding aside, I think those are very valuable and I would encourage you all to reach out to your fellow elected officials in that regard.
You know, sometimes we just need to be reminded is all. There's so much to do and then out of sight, out of mind. And I think there's a lot of support and I think a lot of the council has expressed that and I think we're well on our way. But yeah, you're correct about bugging the councilors a little bit in a nice way.
Yes, absolutely. Take them out for coffee.
Yeah, well, I mean, I do kind of look at it as a piece of the sewer the lake project, but there's other pieces that seem to be stuck in the mud like the buildable lands inventory, which I guess is, has to predate the urban growth management agreement. And, you know, I don't, is there, when we do get this preliminary design and environmental review, maybe that'll be an opportunity to try to kickstart some of this stuff again.
Yeah. And, you know, maybe it's just asking, you know, the city maybe on this buildable lands inventory, see if they're willing to have their GIS person pump that out. It's not that arduous of a task. In fact, I'm almost probably getting to be capable of doing it with the technology, the software, but the, you know, you have to know your planning codes and everything and what everything can be built out to and that's, you know, right in their profession. So, that might be an option.
Well, I mean, is the urban growth management agreement just waiting on the buildable lands inventory?
No.
I don't know why it couldn't go forward.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything specific to the urban growth management agreement in a while, although I haven't inquired either lately. So, that's, you know, something that moves through the planning department, through the planning commission, and then to city council, as I understand. It may, the last time I did speak with Richard Townsend about that, it's something that's been kind of talked about for a long time and there's a lot of stuff that they were already doing and so it's kind of like, okay, we should get around to make this agreement official and, you know, for whatever reasons, these things are not always completed at, you know, the time that you think they're going to be. And I don't know again, you know, what those reasons are, but, you know, the key I think for us was to try to inject basically some language that would suggest things that would be protective of the lake. And, you know, we've not really had those formal discussions, so maybe if we had a kind of, you know, statement associated with the urban growth management agreement that the district hands to the city, you know, and have some sort of formal kind of input, you know, which would, you know, an appropriate place would be at a, you know, hearing on such, you know, agreement. But it might just be helpful, I guess, as far as kicking it forward again, just to have that in place. And that would in fact help me have a very clear idea as to what your all intention would be to that process.
Okay, well, I mean, rather than to say, you know, well, let's start talking about things that protect the lake, I mean, you know, we're not going anywhere until that's done. And even if, you know, they have bits and pieces of it in place already and they, maybe they don't see that they need it, we need it if we're going to, to be able to sewer the lake. You know, it's just an absolute precondition, as far as I know. I mean, anyway.
It definitely helps provide, and again, you know, if the district, you know, intent is to help, you know, guide that agreement, you know, it would definitely behoove us to be, you know, giving them our feedback, you know, as far as what those protections might entail that we would like to see in that agreement between those other two bodies, the county and the city.
Well, I mean, then maybe one thing you should put, at least temporarily in your right brain would be what we would like to see in the urban growth management agreement, circulated among the board, maybe, you know, at a meeting, so that, you know, maybe we do get out in front of it a little bit.
We'll do it, we'll put that on.
I guess part of the problem is, you know, I don't know how to move it forward. You know, we seem to be just, have to stand on the sidelines almost and wait. And I'm getting a little frustrated at the pace of the progress. And, you know, we don't have to, we can start firing off letters and stuff, but I don't know, I don't believe in doing that unless it's actually likely to do some good. And maybe, maybe the, obviously I'm brain-stemming here a little bit, but maybe the linchpin would be when the pre-design thing comes back in April, that we should sort of try to jump on that and try to give the process some momentum. Now that the city is saying, okay, we got the design, we got to take the next step, let's help them take the next step.
That would be sensible, yeah.
Save our shoreline.
I just wanted to put a little, you know, idea in folks' heads here, particularly those that are in the audience maybe even, to, you know, maybe give us a call. We've got some kind of surplus plants I'd like to move, get them in the ground. And, you know, I know there's a couple projects out there that could very easily just plant a few plants and I think improve their shorelines pretty easily. Basically, everybody's shoreline could be improved by a plan or two. So, if you're so inclined, give us a call at the district, 541-994-5330 if you don't have the number, or send us an email, contact us and I can deliver some plants. We've got some sedges and rushes and such that Ava had used to as part of that outreach that are just kind of sitting there. Right now's a really good time to plant because the sun's out and it's still going to be wet probably for a while, so those are good times. And in fact, I did move a few plants to a property owner and I saw that they had been planting some of those and even kind of doing kind of some other work on their property just today, I noticed. So, you know, these are encouraging things and we just really need people to, you know, understand the connection between their shorelines and the lake and the improvements that can happen between those places. And putting a plan in isn't going to hurt you much, so we're definitely encouraging that and have some free to give out to people.
Okay, and then as far as vegetation management and our grasscarp application, there's just nothing to report. ODF and W is in the process of hiring a new director and apparently somewhat distracted and...
Well, I just put that in there because that's just a fact. You know, their staff had, you know, just recently as we reported, I think in December, had finished their grasscarp study of Devil's Lake. So, that was pretty big news as far as what they found. That was assumingly one major part of a staff report that would go to the commission. The commission itself, you know, has their priorities, one of which would be hiring a new director. So, I just, and I just put that in just for your benefit, just to be aware of that. So, what that means as far as, we, you know, our application, I couldn't tell you, I just wanted to let you be aware of that. That's something that is happening at the state level.
All right, we've got about fifteen items here under the communications report. Why don't you hit the highlights only?
Yeah. The first one I wanted to touch on is that we are offering a Lake Stewart Award again, assumingly, budgeted for. And so, we have applications on our website seeking nominations from the public at large for a person or entity. You know, we've typically given it to an individual or a couple in the first case, as I recall. So, that's available and we'd like to get them back by our March meeting. So, in time to discuss and make a move on that. If the district wants to abandon it, I would abandon it tonight, you know, just because it is part of an event, you know, it's going to be Lincoln City's 50th celebration, it wouldn't be the best timing, I wouldn't guess, to abandon it. I would prefer to see us make it to that one because that's a pretty big event, 50th anniversary of Lincoln City, the Community Days banquet. But, that being said, we don't want to waste those organizers' time with a potential award on their agenda and then bail out at the last minute either. So, I would encourage people to get some nominations in, including members from the board, to get some nominations in of citizens and others. Second one, Devil's Lake Dash, the organizers are really seeking from the district kind of a reimbursement clause in their efforts to put this event on. You know, there's a lot of time and expenses that goes into an event like this and they're putting that up front, but they would appreciate frankly if you would reimburse them for the fees associated with getting the special use permit, I think it's called, the city has, as well as the rental of regatta grounds, being fifty and a hundred dollars respectively, should the event get canceled. Now, if it goes on, you know, that's their cost and they're absorbing them and, you know, paying for them with their fees assumingly with the event, but should it go to the point where they have to cancel based on water quality, not based on, you know, their desire to stop it, but because we, you know, have basically a harmful agobloom event or something on that order. So, I put that to your consideration now.
It's your pleasure, gentlemen.
I'm fine if they want, I'm fine with that consideration. Yeah, it's cheap insurance. I think they do, I think it's a nice event, brings a lot of people into town and I want to see them continue going. So, if, you know, if that's what it takes, I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I just appreciate that they do it. And if they're asking for it, it's a small amount. I think it would show a lack of gratefulness and graciousness to deny the request, so I would make a motion that we reimburse the Devil's Lake Dash up to a hundred and fifty dollars for permit fees, should the event be canceled due to water quality reasons.
Second.
Hold, discussion?
Discussion, yeah.
So, what's, if we help finance them, those new permits have, when you read through them, there's a lot of stuff that you're required to do. And one of the requirements is insurance. Is this group going to have insurance? And if they don't have insurance, or whatever liability happens to happen, would we, Ryan, would we be liable or in any way liable for that because we did a monetary partnership?
Well, I think we're just...
No.
Aren't we just providing a backup?
Just asking the question. I don't even have a clue to think that I know the answer to it, so I was asking the attorney here.
Yeah. I don't see it. They're, I mean, we're only on the hook for paying, in terms of liability for this amount of money, we're just on the hook for a hundred and fifty bucks if the event's canceled due to water quality reasons, not because, not for some other reason. As far as our liability, I mean, do we have, do they provide us with some indication of what their program is ahead of time?
Not directly, no. It's nothing that we've really tied to other than signing off on the permit for the use at the state level. We, you know, signed their Oregon State Marine Board permit. So, that's the only, you know, real contact we have with them regarding this event.
It's a pretty crazy reach to think that we'd be liable and the liability kind of thing is based on, somebody gets hurt and district should have known that, you know, this activity was dangerous and should have prevented it and, you know, it doesn't, that kind of stuff rarely flies, so I wouldn't, you know...
You didn't have to call me...
Always be afraid of your own shadow, but I wouldn't...
You don't have to call me crazy.
So, there's still a motion on the table? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Another quick item, the chamber has put on a super auction for decades now and I wrote up a little bit about that here. And as a raffle item, they've asked that maybe we provide a two-hour boat tour as kind of something that they could raffle off for the benefit of their membership, which includes us of course. And, you know, I just, you know, we haven't had that, we haven't done that before, so I kind of wanted just to get your thoughts on it and your decision as to if we should do that. I would basically offer it, you know, for two hours typically on a Friday in the summer when we're going to be going out and trying to, you know, have a presence on the lake anyhow. We've tried to make an emphasis to do that, so... We've tried to make an emphasis to do that. So David.
I'll offer up my boat because I don't, I don't think people want to ride in the district's boat.
I'd agree. All the better.
I'll offer up my boat to do that if we decide to do this.
And captain it.
It'd be a lot more lucrative.
Yeah. I'm not going to let you drive.
Okay, yeah.
But yeah, I'll captain it, but you have to do the guided tour.
Okay.
If we, if we decide to do that.
All the better. I mean, that's...
Well, it seems like, you know, we're here to promote the lake and this is a great way to do that. I don't see any problem with that, especially if David's offering his boat. I think that's a great opportunity.
The next thing we do, fellows, is a motion. I'm afraid to make one.
So I'll make a motion that we offer a two-hour guided boat tour. Second.
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I think it carries unanimously.
And then the last one I have here is under the Devil's Lake Revival. You know, we've, we've only put that event on thanks to Bama last year. The district decided it didn't want to invest the staff time to do that. I guess I'm looking for direction as to how or if you want to proceed on this. We've had a couple inquiries as to, you know, what did, when's the date and, you know, that sort of thing from the VCB, trying to set their calendar up and things like that. So it just seems timely to make that decision and figure out how or if we're going to do it. So...
Have you talked to Bama?
I sent them an email and I found out that, you know, they may be interested in doing it. I asked again this afternoon. Didn't hear back specifically on, you know, like, if they had had a chance to discuss it amongst their whole membership. So that's all I can tell you.
Well, I think we should, you know, I think it's a great event. I think it kind of brings a lot of the community down to the lake. So I'd like to see that continue if possible. I mean, it'd be nice if we get support from Bama again. They did a great job last year. Or, you know, even RFP, a coordinator position for that. Either way is fine, at least in my mind. But I think we should at least get a date. And depending upon whether, you know, Bama's interested or not interested, then, you know, look at an RFP.
Was this as soon as the mid-July?
Yeah. Last year, I think it was the third Saturday, and I think that's the eighteenth.
Did it on the nineteenth or something, nineteenth or twentieth last year.
Yeah.
So we got two car shows, three car shows. And that, you might want to check with Gregory Ernst. He knows the dates of those. Go in, you know, at the same time as a car show. You think that that's, either way, you might...
Just a no.
No. Because there's the casinos, but I think they're early September. Then there's the community, or the cultural centers. Then there's Bama. And Bama's the last one. So it would be during the time that the cultural center was doing theirs. I think it might be on that same Saturday night. Nikki.
Okay.
And I think, I can't say for Bama, but I think that they would, they'd be willing to help. They're being really aggressive this year for the 50th birthday. So, I mean, they've got like ten things they're doing, including, you know, a couple of the biggest things that happened. I've got a handful of people that are doing it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it. And this is not a small task. I mean, you had basically dedicated staff person put this on and develop the methodology to put it on. And, you know, he reported it was, yeah, it was like six weeks of work, you know. It wasn't like a weekend and you kind of get a committee together and get, and it happens. Last year, you know, Bama put it on largely due to, you know, thanks to Dave Price who started all the process, got all the permits, got the dates set up, got all that stuff done. And then, you know, kind of get the, some of the people contacted as to, you know, your attendees, booths or whatever. And then, of course, Ava came on and championed it kind of in the next, she spent a month on it, you know. And it's a time crunch. It's a, you have to start early. That's the thing. You have to start early. You have to invest some time. And then you have to finish strong.
Is Seth still around town?
No, I'd actually heard from him today. So he's, he's not in town. Doing well, though.
Why don't we find, I mean, this is easy if Bama's going to spearhead it. So, and I don't see that we have to make a firm decision until March. We still got, have four months, don't we? April, May, June, July.
I think we should at least, if we're going to try for it, we should lock in a date. You know, and I think we could do that at Paul's discretion. You know, find a date in July that works, you know, for getting regatta and get it locked in. You know, I'll make any weekend work.
David, do you want to run it on the same date as the car show? What are you thinking of, separate or together?
You know, it probably doesn't matter much. I mean, even if it was with the car show and it was at the cultural center there, we could, we could have a presence there and be promoting, hey, come down, you know, visit the lake. We're doing this down here too. We could even run a shuttle service as well between the two events, you know.
Ferrari?
Maybe you could, yeah, do that with Nikki. That'd be great.
Yeah.
I would, I would just be worried about how much Bama's involved with the car show and so, you know, and taking manpower or their ability to help us with the revival.
No, it wouldn't be, yeah, it wouldn't be...
Bama doesn't do that car show.
Bama does the one after, Bama does the la, heck, no, I can't remember. I think they do the last car show.
In October.
Yeah. No, heck, we'd have to check.
August or something, I think maybe.
Is it August? Because I know the casino's in September. So...
Yeah.
Yeah, it was late.
We were the first car show then. We're either the first or the last car show. So we must be the first car show. It's been really successful. Last year, we had like a hundred cars. It's growing.
Is this the one down south in the town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kind of a made-up car show that's just gone viral.
So certainly, you know, if we're going to attract Bama's, or solicit Bama's participation, not going against their car show, you know, would be a definite. But as far as the other, you know, if it becomes symbiotic or if it's not, I don't know. I mean, I think that's a really good question, Kipso.
Why don't you give the person at Bama, whoever you contact there, a call and say, you sure like the way you guys have helped us out in the past with that Devil's Lake Revival? And we just want to know what date worked for you in July?
It's a good strategy.
Yeah. That's the one, see, yeah.
I'll be missing them.
Yeah, you're not going to be. Phone just rang and rang and rang.
And if you find out when their next meeting is, I can go, I can go say hello.
It'd be great if you did.
I think it's every Wednesday?
I think it's every Wednesday.
Every Wednesday?
Six o'clock.
Might be every other Wednesday still. But either that or it's just changed every Wednesday. I'm there. It's just...
Sometimes people show up, right?
Just another day.
So, that's fine.
Okay. So check with Bama first and see if maybe, you know, maybe they got a date that works for them and not some others and might make the difference. And we'll go from there and try to get a date. And I still, we're still stuck with making a firm decision next meeting, right? Because we...
Well, I think you're kind of making the decision almost now, aren't you? I mean...
I think so.
Yeah.
I think we're making...
So we're going ahead with it even if Bama doesn't?
I think if Bama...
I guess that would be, yeah, I mean, that would be the question.
We'll see if they want to do it. If they don't, then we'll drop to the RFP or look for other alternatives for...
You can hire somebody. And we talked about pricing on that. It was pretty expensive to hire a professional to do something like this. You know, if you just, you know, solicited something, you might be able to get somebody that's also similarly talented that doesn't have a business associated with it. And, but it's still going to be in the thousands to just have, hire somebody for, you know. So that's, I guess, have to really...
That's what we can, that could be the question we answer in Mark.
Did you give Bama a stipend last year, did we?
No, we didn't. But we offered this originally as a kind of a request for proposals, say, hey, come put on this event for us and tell us how much you charge us to do it. And hopefully we'll get three people and we can choose from one. Well, you know, people, you know, didn't respond to that. You know, it's not easy thing to do, to organize a bunch of volunteers, to commit to even, you know, doing that. So then, Bama came back and said, hey, this is important enough. We want to put this on.
So basically, you owe us this.
Yes, yeah. I mean, it was, it's a fair amount of work, like I said, you know. And, you know, and I think I put it in here that, you know, you know, if anything, I suggest we determine an actual cash donation if we are going to do, you know, something like that. And say it's not just, hey, tell us what, if you want to put this on and how much you charge. But here, this is out here. There's a, you know, a thousand bucks or, I don't know, what is it worth to you, I guess, to put it on? You know. And it's going to, you know, cost too. It's going to cost, you know, potentially boat rentals or something if you do that again. Or you're going to have a, you know, event or something, you know. You're going to have a giveaway. You know, there's, there's a advertising, I think your budget's about three thousand just for the event, you know, advertising, giveaways, that sort of thing. Then you add in either staff time, you add in, or, you know, some other way of putting it on.
Sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. Last year, did we have any participation from the VCB?
No, not from funding. Years ago, we, or the two years prior, we had funding from them. Sizable. I think it was about fifteen hundred dollars for advertising, if I remember. It might have been even more than that.
So I think the VCC right now is missing some folks. So they can't, they're supposed to be giving out grants. And they're missing some folks on the VCC. So they don't have a quorum. So this may actually buy us some ti, I'm not sure that I'm correct here, but this may buy us some time if we want to get there and get some grants for that car show. It's just the type of thing that they're looking for. It's a proven commodity. It works every time and it's in the community's interest. So it's just a matter, I think, of going through the, the process. And we've got a new interim anyway, but perhaps a new VCB director in Bruce...
I don't know his last name.
Bustamani.
Bustamani.
Yeah. So I just think the environment's ripe there. So...
Well, you know, I mean, that's certainly an option. I know that, you know, Seth, he did apply and got that grant. You know, it was basically matching dollars to advertising that was done outside of the area. You know, whether or not we need that to get 400 people there, I don't know. It's kind of, kind of becoming a pretty good event already. I don't know if, like, advertising with a Willamette Weekly or whatever is, is that valuable to getting attendance. So I don't know much else about the program, how, if it's like, what other things they'll fund. But I know it's a...
That's right up their alley.
Yeah.
You know, the thing is, is you're dealing with a known quantity. And that's one of the things, it draws people. It goes off slick every year. It's a very positive thing for the community. There's really nothing that it, no area that it doesn't work in.
Yeah, yeah. No, and I don't disagree. I guess I'm a little concerned about the effort to apply for money. I don't know, I don't think money is the stopping thing right now. I don't think that's what's holding us back. I think it's deciding, you know, staff time or, or otherwise. And that's, I guess, the real question. I mean, if you want to dedicate staff time, we can dedicate staff time and dedicate a little more to go get some more money and then use that money, I think, very effectively and to the benefit of the city and all is good. But, but I guess the critical thing is, is do you want me to do that? Do you want to use my time to do that, starting now or not? I mean, I think that's really, I guess, my question. And I'm happy to do it. It's just, I just want your direction. For the whole thing, you know, just moving it, the whole thing forward, you know. I mean, I'm just going to stop talking.
Well, I just go back to, I don't see, we're not going to be making a final decision. It's going to be easier to make a final decision when we know if Bama or someone of equal kindness and ability is willing to take it on. So, you know, I would make, make the overtures to Bama and see what they're willing to do and report back. And we got, we have the hard decision, we may have the hard decision to make in March. And we can get a date, you know, and between now and then. But, you know, we, I guess we just always reserve the right to pull the pin on it if we don't. I'm a little bit concerned about the other stuff we have on your plate with, you know, because I definitely want to proceed with the aeration project. And I definitely want to proceed with sewerin. And those things might get busy. And, you know, I don't, we were down a staffer from where we were a couple of years ago. And I don't know if you'd have the time. So...
See if they'll do it. See if they'll do it. If they, if they won't, then we'll go to Plan B. And it's an important event for the lake, for the community, for everything. And we're totally behind it, I think, as a board, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I sure don't want to lose it. Okay.
Thank you.
Safety report. No incidents or updates. Right, Paul?
Yeah, correct.
Midcoast TMDL, there's, finally have a meeting scheduled for February 24.
Yeah. And actually, I may be able to attend that. I had the meeting that I had previously in that slot, I think, get canceled. So I may be able to go to that. So that's good.
Okay. On East Devil's Lake Road?
Yeah. Just confirming what we talked about last time, that the county is looking at replacing that, for, moving forward on that culvert. So just, that's good news. It alleviates some of the stress on that system, potentially, certainly for fish passage.
Good. So are we ready to adopt the, I'm moving on to the policy update and the personnel policy specifically, which is, I think, on our plate tonight. I'm ready to adopt. I'll just make a motion that we adopt the personnel policy as...
I do have one comment before you make a motion to do that. Paul, I was looking, you know, because I pulled up the latest copy, and it doesn't seem like we changed the language around anything over eight hours in a single day being overtime.
Correct. We haven't even changed that. That's not, that's the original draft.
Okay.
So the input that I have, and I printed it up from that last January meeting, was that board discussed whether overtime starts after eight hours a day or 40 and whether the district policy complies with state law. So I can tell you is, you know, as long as you don't work somebody more than 40 hours in a week, you don't have to pay them overtime. I think what, what my concern was and the reason that I would prefer that the district have a policy of an eight-hour workday is because some of the stuff that we do is arduous and long. And you drag people around for 10, 12 hours. I think they need to be rewarded. And we're talking an intern at thirteen dollars and 50 cents an hour.
Well, I mean, I could look at it this way, Paul. I pulled lumber on a green chain for 12 hours, four days a week. And I got three days...
You're a hard worker.
I didn't get overtime. I did my 40.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, so that doesn't really...
I'm just putting out what my thoughts were. And I think when, when you, you know, originally raised the question is, is you were talking about, is somebody working four tens? And then all of a sudden, you're going to have to pay them overtime on the ninth and 10th hour? No, would be, would be the, what I would interpret that to be. However, if they're basically working five days a week and, and you, you know, on Tuesday, you're 12 hours. And then on Friday, you end up actually cutting loose and you only do four, are you going to just pay them 40 hours? And to me, I think that for morale and for keeping interns engaged and just people engaged, I think it's a nice reward to know that people's overtime hours are rewarded. And that's, that's all, that's where I'm coming from, is from a management standpoint. I'm not going to get paid overtime.
Yeah. I'm fine with overtime over 40. But, you know, it's too easy to take to, it's not to track it on a day-by-day... Yeah, I'm fine with overtime over forty, but, you know, it's too easy to take, to, it's not, to track it on a day-by-day basis is, is just too far down the weeds.
Well, not only that, but I think some people like the idea of working ten or twelve hours a day so they get, you know, three days off during the week instead of two. And, or, or get some overtime when they get over the forty hours. But I don't have a big, I don't see it as a big morale issue if they don't get overtime after eight hours. I mean, I think some people actually, like I said, like long days in exchange for having an extra day off here and there.
That's just what I was putting out to you, so. That's, but to understand why there wasn't, there isn't a correction because I haven't put any new changes to those documents. These are all just based on the information that I have here, so.
Well, so, yeah, but we've got a, the draft that we have now is revised based on our last discussion, right?
No, the draft that you have is the original and it really, the only real discussion you have is from January twenty, whatever it is, fourteen, I guess. And the, there was only one substantive change that was moved and approved and that was to remove the employee assistance program. And then there was discussion on the overtime and that was where it was. So that's, that's where we are now. So glad that we're clarifying where we want to be and then hopefully we can adopt it tonight. And then basically what I would do is just make the changes and then put it up. And if, if it didn't seem right, if somebody looked at it, you could, you could tell me where I made, me I made the error and we could revise, revise it. But we only had one change thus far.
Well, all right, why don't you do the newest draft with the, with all of the changes?
The one change right now, that's all we have.
And the, because I honestly, now I've forgotten what, what the employee assistance program was in the first place.
Um.
Other than.
It's basically, well, you guys are employers more than I am. It's a, it's kind of an insurance program where if you had an employee that you wanted, typically it provides other support systems for employees. Leave it at that.
Like grievance counseling.
Yeah, those are things like that.
I, I, I remember it now and we decided to eliminate that.
To pull that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, I don't think we have anything to approve right now. I'd just like to see the latest draft, get it to us before the next meeting.
Okay.
Then we'll have something to.
So what's the direction on the forty hours? I mean, for two comments.
Overtime over forty?
Yeah, I, I see that if somebody wanted to work four tens, there, there is a doorway open for, you know, abuse of that. You know, because then they could get eight hours overtime. Not that they would, but I'm saying someday down the road, somebody could say legally, look, I'm within the confines of what the personnel policy, there's nothing wrong. You change it or, you know, fire me over this. So, you know, I just don't, I, I think that, you know, for down the road, you know, it could create a problem for us if we paid overtime over eight. So I, I agree with some of these other guys that I think it needs to be forty hours a week.
Okay, so I think by consensus.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Forty hours a week is when the employee gets overtime. Cool. Okay, Harmful Algal Blooms Aeration Oxidation Project. Go ahead, Paul.
We've all been waiting for. Yeah, so this is, you know, this is the big business of the district and so, well, you know, just to set the stage, the district put out the, the bid, request for really qualifications is all, you know, but there's, you know, by providing qualifications and saying that you're qualified to do this, there, you are, you know, tying yourself to that RFP. So the, the, we had a bid opening, we didn't get any bids. Ironically, when I opened, reopened the web, my email to check if we got a bid after two o'clock, we got one response. It scared me frankly, I was really surprised, like, and we got a, you know, not an official response to the thing, but just a comment. And I, and I provided that to you. I think it's very valuable. It's from Dr. Bob Cortman out of, on the East Coast, out of Connecticut. He designed Lake Oswego's aeration system, so he's got some experience out on the West Coast too and, and among others. And so, and then we also got some other feedback, which I provided to you, from a local group that was assembled. And that's, that's there for you. And then today, and I don't know if you guys saw your email at four fifty-five or whatever, but about four o'clock, I got something from a third entity.
This one from Lance?
Yeah, from Lance Aquatic Environments. And they lay out three reasons why they didn't reply to the RFP. So to provide a little bit of summary to these things, the, the one from Lance here, I'll just look at it right now because I've only glanced at it. But their, their concern was the, not, the performance bond. So they weren't comfortable tying themselves to the outcomes. And the chlorophyll A standard, which is the state standard, you know, it's, it's kind of what you need to get to. It's not like it's something arbitrary and is, as is the pH standard. So they did not believe that it possible to design a system to live up to these guarantees. So, you know, whether, and then they go on to the bonding issue and putting your company at risk or whatever, which is, you know, a larger part of it maybe. But if we're also taking that at, well, it says without extremely high construction costs and contingencies against failure. So I guess I read that as saying they could build something that could come close and they'd be pretty comfortable with something, but they wouldn't want to build something, frankly, I guess they would assume you wouldn't want to pay that kind of high cost too. I guess would be, was how I read that. That you would be like, well, no, this, we don't have ten million dollars or two million or whatever a high construction cost might be. So then the second comment they have was the general report. So they, they weren't comfortable trying to get the permitting and easement and identifying those. They felt that they'd have to put a staff member on the ground for that. Work improvements related to the engineering project. The third one, they, oh, they, they basically want the, the design-build thing. And that's where we were kind of looking to hopefully do, but your statute doesn't allow that. They want to be, if they were to bid on it, they'd want to construct it effectively. And so, you know, that's not really feasible. You know, I guess we were trying to have some objectivity in there, so put into the RFP that, so they would, the, the engineer would provide what needs to be done and then a vendor would bid on it. You know, that's a pretty typical approach and that's, that's how your statute reads. And so in order to have an engineer that actually could evaluate those vendors to decide, hey, that meets my engineering plans, we would have them under a retainer to do that. And therefore, they can't be evaluating their own bids, so it would make sense, and that's why it was explicitly put in the RFP, that they would be prohibited from bidding on that, if that all makes sense. I don't know how to detangle that, much more than that, besides finding someone, some, some other engineer to say, take a look at this engineering plan and then take a look at these bids that we might subsequently get on these, from these vendors and tell us that they match those specs. I'm not going to be able to do that for, I'm not an engineer, I'm not going to be proofing that. I just don't feel like that's a sensible thing for the district to do. You'd have an engineer to tell you that, yes, these are, these are the specs. I mean, if it's five bolts and five bolts, yeah, but it's a little bit more complicated than that. And it's really like determining that the, the proclaimed vendor's specs match the, the engineer. So that's where, that's where I think you need, you need that. So we could talk about how to proceed on these things.
Yeah, isn't part of the challenge around that is all the vendors have slightly different systems to determine. Not one specification from an engineer is going to line up to, you know, various types of, of systems that are going out there.
That's going to be an issue, yeah.
So it almost leads me to say, can we get design proposals from the vendors and have them evaluated or against the engineering side?
Yes, and I think that that's, I think that's what we can do. I'm saying, I'm qualifying that with an I think. Budget, or, you know.
Because if an engineer can help make a decision on which system best, you know, which system design best meets the needs based on what we receive, then he still can accomplish both sides of the requirements, right? Approved engineering with a separate vendor, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe so, yeah. So that's, 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 that's my thinking to you, so. Okay, so that, that kind of lays out what those kind of objections to submitting were from that entity. The, the other information that you got back, again, here, is, you know, very extensive. There was a thirty-three page cyanobacteria kind of summary, which I forwarded to you, which was indirectly associated with your project, but it was a very nice background to get, I think, is, so, yeah, agreeing that internal loading, definitely an issue for the harmful algal blooms. This is really fine print, I apologize. But the, I guess the nuts and bolts was just didn't feel like we could get there from, get to, get to the goals again, that the district, you know, to design something like this wasn't as feasible, you know, in, from his perspective, to get to the. You've read it, I think, right? And it's been in the separate part. So this new, this new one, I think, is, is enough to cover. And then the second response, again, shallow lakes, yeah, it's been successful in some, but it's not reliably so. That was kind of the nuts and bolts comment that they had. And, and these are things that we kind of have been talking about too and, and knowing examples of that being true. So I guess we're hearing back from some of those same experts that maybe have done those projects or, you know, been.
Well, I was going to say, we also received something from, you know, that project back in Michigan. I don't know if you read through it or not, but I, I certainly did. And it looked like with what they're doing, they're in the middle of their five-year program there and they've seen some fantastic results. Their lake's about twice as big as ours, it's maximum of eight feet, five feet. It's certainly a different lake, but, I mean, if you read through that report, I mean, they were very high on it and they wanted, they were offering their help to us to, you know, give us some information and stuff.
Yes, and I think there's a lot of similarities in that, in that system. You know, quite impressed frankly with what, you know, seemingly some of the benefits that they've seen. The thing that's been different, and again, it kind of comes out to what are the goals of, of the project? You know, our goals coming in have been, you got to deal with these harmful algal blooms, that's our goal. Their goals were you got to deal with muck. That was the kind of parameter that they, they were concerned about, muck, you know, encroaching on their properties. And they had, you know, a study done to say that, okay, if you do an aeration with bio-augmentation, microbes additions, you would be in the right way. And then they had an RFP go against that recommendation and that's where they got this, these, this vendor come in and put in the system, which is, yes, it's been two summers and it's, you know, through February. And I spoke with the governing, I think he was the chair.
Austin Lake, governmental lake board?
Governmental lake board, yeah. So an, an exceptional opportunity because it's very open forum like you guys are in. And so they have to deal with all those kind of uncomfortable moments of, of being in a public discourse versus maybe a lake association. You know, you can just kind of decide what you want to do. It's a little neater on the inside. But, so they're, they have a lot of documentation and I reviewed, reviewed a ton of that as far as the process and, and spoke with who I think was the chair at the time, maybe still is. And he forwarded on, you know, their whole RFP process and such, and I shared that with you. So, so, so there's, there's definitely winners out there.
Yeah. I, I read, you know, I read through the person who, the PhD candidate's report, you know, this afternoon and I was impressed by the results that they've gotten as far as the depth increasing and not only at the sites of where the aerators were, but also throughout the entire lake. And it looked very similar.
Well, not throughout the entire lake, but.
Through some of their, their, their other sites that they were monitoring.
Yeah, sites, not, non-aeration sites, although the whole thing is being aerated, so.
Right.
But yeah, yeah. The whole code is being aerated.
After reading this, even though we didn't get any, any results back for RFP, any, any proposals, I was still thinking, hey, we need to go forward with this. However, we need to, to present and get proposals so that we can evaluate them. I still think it's an extremely viable solution to helping us deal with our harmful algal blooms as well as the depth of our lake and the, the muck that we have too. And so I was impressed.
Yeah, I mean, the muck reduction's a big deal. Their lake, is this Austin Lake?
Yes.
We're talking about?
Yeah, Austin. And then Indian Lake is another example lake, but Austin Lake is the one that has.
Austin's the one.
The lake governing board.
Hackley's the chairman of the board that sent us the information.
Yes, that's my recollection, yes.
Okay. That, that lake is somewhat different. I mean, their problem was mill foil and, but then, and the aeration is doing a great job on, on the mill foil. And, you know, I mean, our mill foil problem hasn't gone away. And, you know, if we can get that benefit besides, but they did not have a big blue-green algae problem there.
Correct.
The technology has worked in other lakes that did have blue-green algae and, so I, I think the problem with the RFP is that we, you know, I think we, maybe we need to divide it in two or something, but take out the, the engineering stuff, which isn't a big part of this anyway, I don't think. It's, it's mostly limnology and do the limnology aspect of the, of the RFP first. And then we can, you know, meet our, our statutory responsibility with an engineering report from somebody coming in and saying, okay, you know, you got to put the, you know, the compressors here and, and. But I, you know, am I, am I not right about this? Is this is a fairly simple engineering problem?
Well.
Civil engineering problem.
Okay, so the placement of things and the permitting of things, I think that was the one concern we heard from the one entity. That is civil engineering, but there's also civil engineers and engineering that goes into designing the system. And that's why civil engineers duly qualified to design something for you. They design wastewater treatment plants. They know how to treat nutrients. I mean, that's, that's what they do. So the, um, it's, it's not, you can't completely untangle that, the needs of, so I guess where the engineer comes in.
I think it's simpler and less scary though.
Yes.
You know, I, I agree with Lance Dolman here. I mean, you know, it's pretty frightening. It's not any wonder that we didn't get, we didn't get bids. I mean, it's just, and I'm. I mean, it's just, and I've looked at the RFP, and I thought, you know, I supported sending it out, because if we can actually get somebody who says they can achieve this, terrific, you know?
Yeah.
But, we took our shot, and it didn't work, and so, you know, we've got to scale it back and make it simpler. And I have taken a shot at it, I passed it out to you guys. I brought, I gave you the pages that had the outcomes, the first two pages of the RFP, and then what I thought might be a starting place for outcomes, and they're all, it's just a limnology base, there's nothing saying, and nobody has to estimate how much it's gonna cost, how much, the engineering aspect is just taken out. And I used the term engineering plan and general report, because I didn't know what else to use, but I don't even know if we need to call it that. And then, once we get somebody who says, yeah, you can do it, and you can meet these parameters, and I tried to loosen up the parameters a little bit, you know, then we can have, you know, somebody, an engineer, design what this person says will work. That makes, I mean, they're still gonna have to come up with existing technology and, you know, describe how that's gonna work in Devil's Lake. But, for instance, what everybody that I talked to tells you is, you know, it's either, it sure would be nice to know, or we absolutely have to know, what the nutrient loading patterns are before we start designing the system. And we need to know, you know, what, when you have a big rain event, you know, how does that increase the nutrient loading? Or does it? You know, we need to have some data on, and I don't know what we have and don't have, but I feel like that's the starting point for what we're gonna ask people to do, is get that data first, and then kind of design a system based on it. So, I'm just throwing it out there, because I felt like we needed to, you know, some kind of a new approach. And, you know, no expert on this, but it's out there, and I, you know, I want to put out another RFP, and I want to do something that makes the right people comfortable in bidding on it. So...
I mean, it kind of sounds like the, you know, the focus should be more on muck reduction and reducing the internal loading from the muck in the lake, right? Not necessarily...
Doesn't muck reduction mean, you have to be reducing internal loading if we're reducing muck, right?
Yeah, very likely.
I mean, how can that not help us?
Right, yeah.
You know, if they're having that kind of...
So, I think that, I guess, when I look at it, the different focus point on our outcomes, right? Our outcomes are more focused on internal reduction of internal loading, right, through muck reduction, with measurable muck reduction, right? That leads to less particulate that the algae can live off of in the water column, therefore reducing the harmful algae bloom capabilities. You know, I was a big proponent about, you know, making sure that we have as much solid reassurance that we could before spending a lot of money. But, you know, in talking to the vendors after some of this came through, you know, I'm almost leaning back towards, you know, let's loosen up a little bit on, you know, some of the hard outcomes, so that they're not as liable, but let's choose an arm that we think we can get the most reduction in, either maybe Knowles or over in the Niatz arm, and do a single system, and focus it on one area of the lake to start with, and see how it goes for, I mean, because we've, you know, read through information about other lakes that have done coves, the coves have been successful. You know, if we're not comfortable with laying out for the entire lake because we can't get the assurances for a full lake system, then start with one section, see if it, you know, see if it works well. And it'd probably have to be at the north end of the lake, do the wind patterns in the summer, but, you know, we could do that, and then continually roll forward with it if it's successful in a few years' time, right, after we have a couple of years of data on it.
I think another...
I mean, I think whatever it takes to kind of loosen it up a little bit, to get those responses that we need, still feel comfortable that we're being judicious with, you know, our funds and stuff, and doing the right thing, so...
I think by piggybacking on that, too, that if we were to do a partial system, and we looked hard at leasing it, then we wouldn't be tying up the money, and we could make it a softer sell as far as, hey, we're not gonna get the chlorophyll here, but, you know, at this level, but by leasing the system, it's gonna cost us a little more, but we're not on the hook for a tremendous amount of money. And, you know, we should be able to figure out within a year or two, pretty quickly, on a three-year lease, that this is progressing, this is helping, this is reducing muck, this is, you know, trapping some of the nutrients. So, I know it's kind of a reverse course, but, you know, it didn't work the first way we did. I think this way might be a pretty viable way of seeing, you know, good results, and with that good results, then we could go to a full lake-wide system a little later.
Well, we could do something similar to what they did over at Austin Lake, in that they apparently set it up for a five-year program with an evaluation period after two years to see if they're gonna go forward. I think that's a reasonable way to do that.
Particular thing, you know, they were looking... And can these companies carry in that type of a setup, right? It's not gonna be a whole lake. That's a huge outcome, you know, outlier for a vendor on that perspective, so I think that reducing the focus a little bit could help.
Well, could it be two-tiered, where, you know, I mean, a proposal for an area as well as the entire lake to see if, I mean, sometimes there's economies of scale, where, you know, it's better for them to, it's much cheaper for us to do the whole lake rather than just a small section.
Sure. Yeah, so, I mean, if we could get the bid to be, by two-tier, you mean bidding both a partial and a whole lake, right?
Right, right.
You know, just kind of thinking back to some of the costs associated with that 220-acre cove that we're kind of were talking about there at Indian Lake, they were looking at basically about $100,000 a year in lease and fees and power and that. So, that's, you're not gonna be able to really, you don't have the contractual, if that were the cost for a 200-acre arm of, say, Devil's Lake, you're really, really at edge with your finances to get that. You know, I think there might be a lot of value, frankly, in just outright purchases in operation in that regard, because, you know, getting the devices, and, you know, if you're, you know, putting it out there that, hey, this is gonna be our approach regardless, effectively, then in that case, you know, why lease? You know, buy the car, you know, rent, don't rent. Get it out there, you know, and run the risk, but at least you have a known risk, I guess, too. And you can achieve, I guess, the full scale that you would hope to achieve, potentially within your budgets, you know? The other thing is, is you look at this as a phase thing, and you look at, you know, the cost, if it's, if you scaled that $100,000 annually from 200-acre cove to 608-acre lake, you know, and it was $300,000 a year, well, frankly, grant money would be really difficult to, I think, to get, to get leasing. You could look at capital, I think, and get in that regard. I think you'd have a better shot at that. I think people might be more interested in something like that. If that, you know, and that's why maybe just the outright purchase in the first place might keep you within your capacity. But, if you weren't, then I think you'd have potential grant matches that you could go after, because it's, you know, it's not cheap. You gotta keep paying the power, too. You gotta keep maintenance. Maintenance is pretty big on system described, it's pretty big. 60 days, every 60 days blowing those things out, or pulling them out, cleaning them, swapping them out. You figure, you know, a couple of days, train staff every 60 days, spending, you know, so, you know, that's a commitment, you know, there's funds that you need to, you know, or staff that you need to have available to do that. Just, it's just so, in that regard, leasing might be attractive kind of just as a short-term informational thing, but if you're really just gonna feel like, you know, you're going forward with this anyhow, I don't know, buying might be more sensible. I don't know, those are just some more thoughts.
Sold on either one, yeah. Whether it's purchased or whether it's leased, that's, we can allow that option in the response to be either. See which one's more, which is the more beneficial approach, based on what we get back.
Yeah, I mean, we just gotta put it out as partial and whole lake, and lease and purchase. And, I mean, the numbers I've heard seem to be much better to purchase than to lease, but, you know, and still, we see the numbers, we don't, can't make that decision.
Well, there's always a possibility, too, you could purchase for a one-arm cove. I think you could, you know, it is a gamble, so, you know, I think it'd be a lot easier to sell to the public of wise uses of our tax dollars, if we say we've got two years, we've reduced muck by 18 inches, chlorophyll levels are down by this much. You have got proof in the pudding, I mean, it's a much easier sell, and I think everybody would feel much better about expending a tremendous amount of dollars. So, that's another option, too.
Yeah, I think, I agree with Randy there. It's like sitting down at a poker table, and you've never played, and just go all-in, you know? I'd like to hedge our bets a little bit, to see what kind of hand we really do have.
Yeah, I like that thought, too. I mean, you know, you buy some equipment, you know, just a piece of lab equipment, scale it way, way, way down. You spent $1,000 on a piece of lab equipment, you think it's gonna work great, it doesn't. Well, yeah, you didn't buy lab equipment for, you know, this whole realm, and you're only out $1,000, not $4,000 or whatever. So...
And if it works...
And if it works, you still...
And you have justification for going on. It's just you don't blow your hole, you know?
Yeah, well, everything at one go.
Yeah.
Well, whatever the case, I think we need to try to get some proposals.
Well, and so, developing this next phase, and this is good, you know, we're having this discussion, you know, the district basically put it on the table, we want an all-or-nothing thing, and we got nothing. Okay, now we roll the dice again, and it's not, I mean, there's no loss. I mean, we haven't lost anything, you know, it's not like it's a big failure or anything to not get a response on what would basically fix your lake. You know, that's not a big loss, in my estimation. And I think it's just, we've got to figure out what, particularly if we're gonna change the outcomes, and how we do that. You know, the, you know, a very good reason not to do muck reduction, you know, and when you guys asked me, okay, can you develop an RFP that has something that you have a standard against? And I said, yeah, we can do that, and we'll use the state's standards. And we have things that we can measure that say chlorophyll is this, you know, it's a really, we can, we have a pH meter, people can take a piece of litmus-type paper, you know, and run with that. So, muck reduction, I think, you know, is a lot more arbitrary in things of, as far as designing a fair test, you know, I think that, I think, in fact, this group out of Michigan, I think that they're trying to advance their own methodologies, and we've read that in some of the reports, you know, as a better way to determine muck reduction, because things move around, you know, it's a lake, it's, you know, so, so, outcomes and measurements of those outcomes, I think you have to, we'll have to figure out where we want to land on that.
Well, you know, doing Randy's plan, it really reduces the risk for your purveyors, too. You may find out that you have more participation when the stakes aren't so high. And also, it gives you a chance to work with the, you know, your purveyor, to see not only how the system works for the lake, but how do you like working with that company? So, more cautious approach, but...
And if you were to do that and utilize Randy's style here of, you know, a 50% or 25% or whatever number you want to use for reduction in chlorophyll or reduction in algae toxins, it's a, I think that would give a lot more leeway for guys, you know, instead of saying you have to be at .03, you know, for chlorophyll or whatever the numbers were. So, by giving them a percentage of reduction of where we're at now, it's, they would feel a little, you know, I'm being able to hit.
So, you know, one of the biggest kind of, you know, white elephant in the room, I don't know if that's appropriate, but like, biggest thing in my, one of the biggest questions I have in mind is really that engineering being done, you know, to follow your statute to get, and, of course, you know, these vendors, they may have great replies to these things, but they can't really engineer this for you, per se. You do need somebody that has a engineering, to do engineering in the state of Oregon, you have to have a license, you know, and these type of things. So, it might be all good and fair that somebody in Kansas, for all we know, designs a couple of these, too. There's, so, I have to figure out how we do that, I guess, still. That's, it's, I get the direction on, we want to move forward, that's good, we're moving past that, and so, I'm not concerned about that. I've got good direction as far as partial, potentially, full, potentially, lease, potentially, outright buys, potentially. Just really figuring out how to design this next request, so we can get something of an engineering value that we can then put out to bid for vendors, again. So, we have to get that kind of second step, so that when the vendor assessment comes, it's basically based on cost, and that they can meet the engineering value that we need. That's how I understand the statutes and the way, and that we have to kind of move. So, we have to get engineering report, you know, be it five bolts or whatever you have to supply the district or whatever, but something from them, so that you can say, what's your price for five bolts?
Well, maybe the way to do that is to get it, say, much air through the water space.
Right, and having them determine that, what that amount of air is.
How much air is to go into water column.
Yeah, that's exactly it, yeah. And...
If we can get, say, that, vendors, if they have the system to meet it.
And this is, this is, yeah, no, this is the kind of...
This is really awkward.
Whole thing's awkward.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
All the sand has to go, so...
I know. When you read that statute, it's just goofy, you know? I'm gonna take a hard look at that and see if, the engineering plan term is kind of loosey-goosey throughout that thing, and I was focusing first on just the scariness of the RFP and trying to tone that thing down, so...
Peel away the...
Don't get any more emails, like, from Lance Dolman.
Yeah.
You know, because that's how I think I would have responded. So, the next step is to kind of fit this engineering plan requirement with what our actual needs are. I think that can be done, it's just, you know, part of the problem is that we're in chapter 552, you know, the Water Improvement District, that chapter existed before we came along, and it was basically for irrigation districts, and so, real easy to design an engineered plan for irrigation... And so, real easy to design an engineered plan for an, for an irrigation district, but, you know, it's a little, it's not a very good fit for us, all those requirements that were really in there for irrigation districts. So, we just got to work through, work through that, but we can do it.
I, I think so too. And, you know, I, you know, it's just a, just, you know, getting it, verbalizing it and having these discussions is very helpful. And I think, you know, oh, the only other thing I was, you know, putting forward too, you know, I put a bunch of bulleted ideas down just to keep discussion going. It's just like, you know, just go and, if this engineering plan is going to be under, I think it's, the state's limit is a hundred thousand dollars, you can do a direct appointment to get that part done. You can just go find somebody in Oregon that's got the skills. You could do three informal kind of, you know, inquiries and then go find that person and say, here, we need this done. Go do it for us. That's, you know, to my, again, recollection of the, the, you know, Public Contracting Law 279C or 297C, I forget which way it goes, but those, those exist for you. And then you'd have, you know, instead of just going out for an RFP against this thing and get, being kind of vague again, you know, just going and saying, hey, go do this for us and charge us and then we'll be done and then we'll put that out. You know, that might be another way of looking at this.
Well, then, in reality, what he needs to do then is evaluate what comes in.
Absolutely. And that was part of the case as well earlier. That was, that's why in the initial RFP, it says, hey, we need somebody that can say, this is what we'll do and this'll, these coming back match that. You're right, yeah. And so, that would be something you would have in that, their scope of work too. So, maybe we'd think about it. But I don't, I don't know. Those are, those are, those are some of my other thoughts that I wanted to kind of put out there.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, we know the problem. It's just a little hard to wrap our heads around to how to, how to get to, you know, legally the best system, you know, in a way that's permitted by the, by the statute. And I think we should start working on it now.
Yeah. Yeah. Wouldn't like not work on it, you know, like, I, you know, if you didn't have a final decision, I would still be kind of like processing it if anything, if not like specifically designing something that, you know, to throw at you for next morning.
I feel like I have a better perspective on it after listening to the comments that we did get back and talking to people and what, what scares them and what doesn't and what it would be reasonable to have in terms of, of performance criteria and what isn't. I'm getting pretty comfortable with that side of it. It's just this dichotomy between the, the limnology and what I think it was civil engineering. You apparently think, you're talking about some kind of limnology kind of engineers that I'm not really...
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm saying that there's civil engineering in the eration design too. Not only just the, so I think a lot of the permitting kind of civil engineering spotting of, and that's what Lance was saying. It was like the placement, like he doesn't know what exists out here. He doesn't want to have to call up this city or some landowner and can we build this on your property kind of thing. That, those were, those are civil engineer things too. But there's civil engineering that starts at the lake too. And that's, I think, what David was saying, like how much air you have to put in that system, which is also a limnological question, which is what you're saying. The outcome is, 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 occurs if, if that is met. You know, you have to, you have to know enough about how to get there to design it. And that, and those are both, that's where the overlap You know, that's why, you know, someone like a, you know, Bob Kortman or someone that's done these in lakes, that's their side of it. They're still getting that, the engineering value creating or showing, telling you what you need there too, but not interested in saying, put it at regatta grounds. You need power coming into that system. So, the other big thing about this, and this is why this RFP is, was really designed, is so we could get a real picture too as to what the whole cost would be. Because it's one thing to say, yeah, put an eration system in. It's going to cost you, you know, half a million dollars for infrastructure and it's going to, you're going to have a fifty thousand dollar electric bill. Okay, maybe we can float that. Good, let's do it. But now you have to get the power there. You have to cite it. You have to do all that. And if then you're like, well, now it's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Now where are we? You know, and so that was, that was the other attempt is to get all of that information. And, you know, that's just, didn't happen for us. So, we'll still face that though. And I think that in reality, you know, having a system that's got two or three spots in the lake that we're attending to from versus thirty or twenty or whatever others might build, you know, for other systems probably is favorable. And so, maybe there's some most user-friendly engineering approaches too for, as far as the district to be able to, to do, do the maintenance and have access in those things. Three spaces versus twenty again, you know. But to me, that would make more sense. And that's kind of why I like the idea of maybe doing a direct engineer approach because you can kind of say, hey, this is what we feel we can get for you. We can find three spots. We've got the city. They got two spots. Maybe we can get a private owner. Maybe we get the state, whatever other, you know, spots. There's power there. We're setting the groundwork. We can move forward. This is a lot easier. The, the systems are going to be a little bit bigger, you know, you're going to sound, need a soundproofing a little bit more, whatever. Versus twenty things, you got to go maintain them and just long-term. I'm thinking long-term.
Right. Well, I, I know this, this system in, at Austin Lake, they only had three compressor sheds for over eleven hundred acres, so...
For two hundred and twenty acres.
They just did an arm.
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah.
The full lake...
Am I reading that wrong then?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, so that, and that's, that's, I mean, but to me, you could probably, if you had to, you could still run, you could have two compressors side by side. I think that would be preferable even.
Right.
And just having, you know, extra lines out there. And, and just dealing with some of those other necessities might be long-term better than, you know, a disparate kind of approach. We're coming from fifty properties and, anyway. So, those are, those are some of more of my thoughts. And I think we got enough direction to try to assemble something.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah. I just want to reiterate, I think it's important to look seriously at doing, you know, possibly what we're talking about is a buyout in just one arm. You know, what it does, it follows, it follows the same model that Brian's using with the sewer-ing around the lake. We're sewer-ing the small little area. The city's watching. We've run into multiple problems, you know. It's just, it's an ongoing thing. And we, you know, Brian's learned a tremendous, a lot about this along the city. And what it's going to do is pave the path for the rest, the rest of the way around the lake. So, and I could see this, you know, doing a partial system in the lake, you know, not that I'm saying we have to, but I'm saying it would, it would definitely give us a lot of learning experience, you know. And also it would tell us if we're spending our money wisely. So, I think that's a, I think it's, it's an important thing to look at.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you know, but it is, it is true that, I mean, a, a small sewer system should work the same as a big sewer system. But doing an arm of a lake, I mean, you're just going to get mixing that you don't get if you do the whole lake. And, but from what I am told and apparently Devil's Lake does set up pretty well for a partial, a partial test because, you know, we want to have the results in the summer and we got a steady north to south wind in the summer. So, mixing-wise, we should be in pretty good shape, you know.
Yeah, it's really just barring that one southwestern storm that you get maybe mid-July and it rains and blows like heck from the southwest and drives everything back up there. But assumingly, a system could overcome some of that too. You know, I mean, that would be kind of one, one good check, you know, that if it can't overcome it again and the wind's gone back north, flowing from the north again, then what's going on? You know, there might be something to learn from that too. But, you know, as long as it's not continually being pushed back in there again from the next southwest storm, you know.
Okay. The other thing we, we really ought to build in this RFP is the, some measurement of, of external loading, you know, as a, as an initial step. Because these guys want to know, if you have a, you have too much external loading, it just overwhelms the whole thing. And it won't work no matter what you do. And, you know, I mean, I would put it in any way and it's, and maybe that would hasten the, the sewer-ing of the lake to, to take away the external loading. But, you know, I could take it all away obviously, but make a big enough dent. But point, point though, point being, we really, I think, the vendors are, are much more comfortable if they know that that's part of the deal and that when they're going in, if you were, especially we're asking for performance guarantees. Well, okay, you know, we'll give you the guarantee, but we want to have some idea of what the external loading is. And it's only, it's sort of only fair, you know. We're asking for performance guarantees. Well, I don't know, and I don't know how good our data is.
Well, you know, that was kind of the approach in, in, earlier in the summer that we were looking at is, we put an RFP out there and got some bids back and decided not to move forward on the modeling approach to getting a better understanding of the lake to determine what would be the loading and then how to approach it. And so, you know, I think some people will say, yeah, you got enough data. Others will say, no, you need a ton more. So, I think we're closer to we've got a fair bit. A lot of people are at zero. But I think the big, you know, often the big questions are is, you know, well, first off, you know, there was a nutrient budget done in the eighties. Things have changed. There's not a dairy out up Rock Creek anymore. There are a lot more homes that are a lot older, running on septics, could be in worse condition. But, so there are additional loading there. So, there's some, we have something. It's not zero. And so, yeah, I mean, absolutely people want to know as fine a degree as possible as to what you've got if they're going to bid on it. And we've heard that. We've heard that from people. So, you know, that just takes more money that, that we didn't want to move on. We looked at this, we, I guess what the decision was like, well, we'd just rather spend that on a bigger eration system. You know, and I think that was a pretty fair approach because you're looking at eighty grand or something and, well, I spend eighty grand if our, we can build something for three hundred grand and maybe spend three hundred and eighty grand. And so, it's chicken and egg there a little bit.
They don't seem to really need, you know, real specific data. They just want to know, you know, there's some, what the, what, where the, where the big inputs are.
Yeah. And I think we've got that fairly well.
So, they can build in a little bit of, you know, mitigation into the, I just, all I'm saying is I'd like to, to be able to, I think they'd be more comfortable seeing that as part of the deal, that they're going to be able to learn that and design the system accordingly. But I don't know. I'm not sure, I'm saying that, but I'm not sure how much that ca, what the cost of that would be with the time.
Yeah.
Frame is. I know...
They're going to want to explore the...
The contract we bid earlier, I didn't know how much of that was just, just measuring external loading versus the other aspects of that.
My guess is people are going to want to, if, if, if you're requesting that they do that, they're going to want to hit that pretty hard because that's going to really drive the design.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe it's twenty thousand dollars worth of additional monitoring and, you know...
We had to face up to it and included it's part of the deal.
Yeah.
I think we might get more, better, more confident bids if we did that.
Mm-hmm. For this engineering of, of the system again too. This is the kind of, the root that, yeah.
Somehow we got to figure out a way to get the cart before the horse.
Yeah, right, yeah. So, I mean, is that something the rest of the board is interested in doing or how, I mean, what is, what do you feel on that? Do you want to put that in there?
What kind of timeframe are you talking about? Much more pushed off if you end up having...
I, I'm not even really frankly comfortable talking about timeframes. You know, it's, this is, you know, this, this is a project that we're either invested in or not. I only say that because, you know, you might be, oh, I estimate an extra two months or something. And then you fall like a year out of your implementation. So, it doesn't, I don't know if that really, not to just, I, I don't know the answer to that, but also I don't know if it's going to really...
Well, what I'm looking, what I'm thinking about is if, you know, data's great. The more data you got, great. But, you know, if it pushes off one more year, okay, it's, that's one more year we got to deal with. You know, who knows what.
I see your question, yeah. I, I was thinking just, you meant like, yeah, absolutely. So, and we talked about this at, with the modeling thing. Easily, when we were talking about it, we were saying, you know, start in May and finish at least in November, but really a full year of data. That was what we talked about. And I think that those are still pretty sound. You have to hit all the windows of...
Dollar, dollar bills you're going to spend on that versus, let's say, a partial system. I know I'm harping on it, but let's say you do a partial, the dollars you'd spend on a pretty complete modeling system for nutrient loading, you know, it could pay for a large portion of that part possibly or a portion of it. And we could be in, you know, a year earlier possibly too. So, I, I love data. It's great, but you know...
Well, it seems like that if we put it out, without going into specifics about the data and stuff, that we'll find out right away. If nobody responds and say, we need the more data, then they aren't going to respond. Isn't that the case?
Potentially, yeah.
So, I mean, that's the way I look at it is...
Certainly potential.
If...
If you want.
Yeah.
Water.
Houses and people's front yards and their septics and, yeah.
Put a external loading, you know, system will handle that. Build in the extra bit. Determine that.
Yeah, I'm hearing your thinking there. I just, I'm a little timid to give them too many outs frankly to, the same way.
But, you know, we're never...
Yeah. They're estimates for sure. You know, I mean, you're going to, you know, if you were to try to determine what the, you know, loading from septics were, you would first find out very, very accurately how many septics you have. That's an easy thing. And then you're going to estimate based on the number of people that are using those things and then the functionality of that system. And if it's, you know, how many years old and if the, you know, if the system's been sitting there for fifty years, which a lot of them probably have, the drain fields, even if you got a new septic system, they're pretty full, the drain field too, for as far as holding nutrients. system, they're pretty full, the drain field too, for as far as holding nutrients back. So even a functioning one, again, from a bacteria standpoint is, you know, exporting, next one in line just pushes it forward, right? Um, so, okay, so you can figure that out, but that's going to be an estimate after that. And so then your other things are a little bit, uh, even more amorphous when you're looking at shoreline and contributions. And, you know, maybe you got, you know, 50 people that are, uh, really got great shorelines and you got 250 people that have got pretty mediocre shorelines. And then you've got 100 people that have got basically straight pipes off of the rooftop and everything is heading in the lake, you know. Those are pretty hard things to estimate. And then what's the contribute, contribute, contribution from each of those, you know, A grade, B grade, C grade, you know, properties as far as nutrients? Do they have five dogs? They have one dog? I mean, these are the real realities of trying to come up with that number. And it's going to be a lot of guesswork. I think people get pretty good at it though too. We're not the first lake that people would have tried that on.
Well, let's, let's wrap it up. Um, you know, I think we, we have some sense of where we're going. And we're trying to walk this line between getting something specific with some, some, some decent, you know, performance parameters, but at the same time not scaring everybody off and not making it an impossible form to bid in the first place. So let's just work that line and, uh, you know, come up with something.
You know, Paul, I think the fact that they wrote back and lets you know they're still interested, might be willing to work with us. Otherwise, why take the time to, to do that?
Yeah. And I, I definitely appreciate that. And I apologize to those people that maybe wrote back that are getting this aired in front of the public. Maybe that was a little bit, but you, you submit something to a public body, you can understand as a public document. But, you know, they did so at their own time and, you know, and it was, it is very much appreciated. And I, I try to make that clear to you, uh, in the staff report because it's valuable information. And you're right, they're, they, uh, particularly a few may still have quite a bit of interest. So.
And maybe, you know, I, I'll do some work on this juxtaposition between the engineering plan and the, and, and the RF, and the RFP and then we can sit down and kind of brainstorm that one. Because I think there's a, got to be a creative way out there to deal with that.
Yeah. I, I appreciate that.
I'm just not seeing it yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Question?
Replacing the water impoundment device, AKA the dam.
So I think, oh, you, go ahead.
It's all you.
Oh, you want me? Okay. Yeah. So really, I think the direction was, you know, you sent me off on a task to try to find out if we could get, um, an engineer to, to tell us that, you know, we could do A, B, or C kind of thing, approach to impound water, alternatives to impounding water, uh, either wholly removing the cement structure or otherwise. Um, I, I've met and, and been in contact with an engineering firm. I list them here and we're not under contract with them. Just FYI, you know, I mean, people shouldn't really be contacting them from the district or otherwise I wouldn't think to try to prod information because they're not under contract. They're just dealing with me right now. But, um, the, um, we're, we're looking at getting a proposal for them. And then if, if it sits within the dollar amount that I've got allocated, then we'll engage them and get that information back to you. You know, we, we hoped a month. That was a pretty big guess. Frankly, the gentleman that, uh, we've been working with actually got sick for a week. You can't hope and get everything in once. But, so that's still forthcoming. Um, but we did, I did pick this as a, as a person to look at specifically because of the work that they're doing for the city and familiarity with a, a water dam that we, we had thought it might be an option. So that's where it is. Um, as soon as we get that back, we'll, we'll get that set, uh, for a public hearing on that matter, um, which would cover, uh, the, um, potential, you know, moving to a summertime only impoundment using some other alternative device as well as a full look at the water right as we were instructed to do so. So you'd have a, kind of a joint hearing there on that. And we'll notice that, um, you know, as, as statute requires, as that time allows, when, when we're ready to do that. April is, I think, more reasonable certainly. March, uh, we're going to talk about at the end of meeting, when we have our March meeting, but still that's going to be a tight thing for the notice perspective. You got four weeks' notice there. So, um, April is certainly more likely. Any thoughts or any questions or concerns?
We need to set that public hearing two months out then, since every meeting seems to be about four weeks or three weeks or?
Um.
Should we just set that for April? I mean, that gives us, uh, more time than that actually.
You know, we could, but if, if, if you don't get that engineering report that you want back in time, that's a big question. I guess you, then you don't, you'd have to just cancel it and reissue the same notices. It's not that much of an expense or time to, to notice a public hearing. So we could say April, we're going to have a public hearing and, um, have a public hearing, even if we don't have all that, and then extend it. And then, then you're kind of covered. You're just, well, we'll extend that to the next, I think that's allowed through the statute.
We'll deal with that at the end of the meeting when we set the March date.
Okay.
Kind of tell us what we need to do.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's, again, April seems much more likely. Just, just.
We on to the board election, repositions up for election?
Yeah, new business.
What about it? There's just, it's here.
Just, just an announcement really.
I think the main, the, the, probably the most important date, his last data file for office is March 19th, for anybody who doesn't know that. So, uh, Oregon and California land grant act, this is what Paul Caton was talking to us about earlier.
It is indeed, actually. And, um, I think he did a really good job of kind of laying out what, um, would be my concerns too, relative to if this were to transfer ownership. Um, you know, the US Forest Service is kind of in our backyard. You know, we work with Hebo District, uh, um, more tangentially with, uh, through the San Francisco Watershed Council, but we've got a very good working relationship with those folks. So that's a, a good thing. More importantly, I think it gets down to what becomes the objective of those parcels. And under the Northwest Forest Plan, as Paul alluded to, um, there's significant protections for that land as well as use. And use is harvest, you know, it's not zero. It's not like you're saying this is off limits. Um, this late succession reserve, AKA old growth, to achieve that, you have to harvest or it's, it's logical to harvest. And, um, Lincoln City in its own open spaces have harvested, um, strategically harvested parcels with, uh, or, or timber within the, these, uh, some of these open space plats that they have acquired, um, that are, you know, basically you have all one growth of timber, you know. It's all 100-foot tall timber. We'll take out a fraction of those and some of those other big ones can shoot up. And so that's, that's the idea of, of kind of targeted harvesting. And that's what the city's done. That's what the Forest Service does. Um, and so whereas under the BLM management, um, all bets are off. You, you lose the protections of the Northwest Forest Plan, which, um, you know, we, we talked about ordinances that the districts passed. We've passed one ordinance. It was a, it was a forest protection ordinance pre-Northwest Forest. We rescinded that when the Northwest Forest Plan came into be because it afforded the protections that we were seeking to, to begin with. So the district is, is kind of been an elite on this, at least for our little watershed at one time. And I think it's, it makes sense to continue the management that's in place for those properties. I gave to you a, a copy and I can put it, I have a little, uh, image I could throw on the slideshow. If you go ahead and take a 10-second break here.
So it looks like about. Forest Service.
Yeah, I'd say it's a rough estimate, yeah.
That goes clear, or watershed. Just a bear crack.
Um, so what this map is showing, and I don't know if people, if Charlie's got this zoomed in at home on, on the thing yet, but, uh, this is a forest ownership and fish presence map that I generated from the GS layers that we have at the office. And, um, colored in bright green here, all these big blocks, a good fraction of the, of coast range is in the Siamese National Forest. Um, and then I call out what BLM owns. And this is kind of this, I, I don't mean to target it with the hazard looking thing, but it stood out really nicely. But, um, these, these kind of cross-hatched areas, um, which BLM owns currently. Um, and then all, much of the rest of this is either private timber for our watershed or then you, you know, this is all individually owned parcels. Now, the Rock Creek system, um, is just the only stream that we're showing here, um, uh, because it's the only one that the forest property lands in. Now, I've marked that with this kind of railroad track for where you have not only fish presence, but Coho salmon. That's our threatened species that, that, you know, exist in, in Devil's Lake and in, in, uh, Rock Creek. And that travels all the way up to the very near top of the watershed. Um, and then this arm actually is, um, also Coho, but not Steelhead. And it doesn't show as well, but I was more interested in showing you the Coho, uh, uh, where Coho live, you know, and, uh, and where that threatened species really needs a little bit of help frankly, because it wouldn't be threatened if it weren't. Um, and then, so this would revert, and, and sorry to, to not answer your question as quickly, but this line here, David, is the watershed boundary more or less. It, it really would cut in, uh, oops. It would really cut in right here. It's just a kind of a gross analysis.
I know they did a bunch of logging, or selective logging. Assume that was Forest uh, slash. They did a whole bunch.
I think most of the logging has been private timber. So.
What's going on in the watershed that really?
My, 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 I, I thought that that was private timber. I may have been mistaken on that, but.
Service was the upper. It was basically put back state in the roads.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
Vastly different sizes that were going on there. Selective and.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, you know, this, you know, as Paul alluded to and I kind of mentioned in the staff report, you know, the city had looked at this, um, you know, and found that, yeah, they wanted to, uh, oppose this, you know, uh, this bill, uh, whatever form it may come, you know, like Paul said, it's 2015 now is the new title. Um, so, um, if the district wanted to follow suit, I would follow up to Wyden and, and through channels such as that. And maybe to Merkley's office such that if it, it does get a, doesn't get withdrawn or changed to our liking, that at least there might be some other, um, uh, you know, vote to talk with as far as that entity, you know, you've got two votes in Oregon. Um, and then similarly, if it went on to the House, you'd want to, I guess, continue just another letter to your representatives. But that would be, I think, the, uh, the question is do you want to submit a letter in opposition of this bill?
I wouldn't move that we did that.
Or I second that. I, I would, I would like it to be within the boundaries of our watershed. Represent that, a, take a position that is, you know, kind of, kind of providing some protections to the watershed, forest practices that are in place today, which I think are better than being from a watershed protection and wildlife perspective. I think we just need to do it within just of our boundaries. There are other areas that are going to be impacted by this legislation. Make it so broad that, you know, the whole thing because we don't have expertise or, or, so I would want to make it inclusive of our fine boundaries, right? Forest service land within the boundaries of defined.
No, I think we should walk lockstep with the city on this. It's really important and we need to send a clear message that, uh, we, we need the protection that the, uh, the Forest Service provides us and.
Do we, do we know the reasons why they're, they're doing this bill? And, I mean, I look at, they're both federal agencies. They both have different, you know, charters certainly in what they do, but why are they?
It's to increase the harvest amount.
That's pretty much.
Economic development.
Yeah.
Well, it's, yeah, it's to provide money for the counties.
Yeah. So the Oregon California land grant, these land properties stems from, you know, when.
Right, I know.
Yeah, way back, right. And, and a lot of the, you know, counties in the south part of Oregon are really dependent, had been dependent on those, um, dollars. And when they stopped harvest, they, you know, and, and frankly, the, the federal government kind of said, okay, we'll keep giving you these monies for quite a long time since they changed those practices and, you know, and, and then they finally dried that up. Now, this is, I think, Senator Wyden's approach to.
Getting those monies back to the counties.
Gain money back, yeah, through, through harvest, increasing harvest.
And, and you know, Paul's presentation while it was excellent, was not nearly as extensive as the presentation that the city provided. And there's astounding erosional things that are, that are taking place. It's, you know, it's nothing that we want for us.
On the BLM property? All right.
David, is this, uh, ownership change, US to BLM? I mean, all we see is our little map, watershed area, but guess what my question is, State of Oregon, what are we looking at?
You know, I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
It's hard to, I mean.
It's likely in the bill, but I, and I gave a link to that, but I don't have the answer to that.
I can totally understand what Kip's saying, but, you know, I understand what David's saying too, that it's hard for me to want to vote on something that I don't understand what's out here, you know, how the impact this is. Is it a fairly small impact along the coastal range where there aren't any other lakes or, you know, rivers or streams or?
Well, certainly it's economic development.
Huge impact on our drinking water.
Yeah. Right, this, but, you know, without seeing the whole picture, it's like, it's, it's kind of hard to. Do you, I don't want to oppose something that could be beneficial to another community, but I think the, the areas that. Well, did the city, did the city do a launch?
Yep.
Question on this?
Pardon me?
The city did like, we oppose any transfer?
Well, they set the, um, gosh, I don't want to overspeak here because my memory's not, I would like it to be. But there was a whole area that, that surrounded that was included in that. And I don't, I can't draw you a map of it, but it's.
Check their resolution. It's online, but I don't.
Yeah.
Language was.
You know, I feel sorry for, for other counties or, you know, for surrounding counties, but I mean, we have to be fierce protector of our, protectors of our watershed and our drinking supply and, and the salmon. And, and those things are all significantly threatened right now over, you know, additional, uh, timber harvesting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Kip. I mean, you know, what affects Devil's Lake is the Rock Creek watershed. And I have a hard time separating one part of it from another. And, you know, I think wearing the hats that we wear on this board, we, our only interest is to oppose it. So, I would move that we authorize Paul to draft a letter in opposition to the bill, and maybe circulate that before you send it, so that everybody can have some input.
I mean...
If you want to have input, you know.
I can, I can clearly tell you right now, I'm happy to support watershed, as that's what we would do with the community. But I, I cannot support a carte blanche. I don't know what other communities, I don't know about the other lands that are involved, and I won't vote for, I will vote no on carte blanche resolution.
There's five people here, so...
I'm just telling you right now, that I, I...
I know it's going to get in the way of your spotted owl hunting, but...
Well, I, I think I go along with David. I, we represent the watershed, and, and so I, I'd like to focus our comments toward that.
My question, is this something we need to decide tonight for sure, or is this something that we could do some research about, to see what effect it's having up and down the coast?
You know, this is kind of a fluid thing. I don't, I don't know when it would come forward, and when you would want to, when would be your last opportunity, because, you know, this isn't happening, this is happening in Washington, D.C. And then frankly, it's not something that we're going to be able to watch as closely as, you know. So, I did bring it forward, frankly, a little hastily, because I wanted to at least get it to you, and, because I was under the understanding that a March timeframe may be likely for this. And at that point, particularly if you're having a late meeting in March, I didn't think that you would have maybe enough time to at least get, you know, a little bit of your thoughts around it. So, it could, it could not even come up, too. I don't know, you know?
This has just been introduced in this Congress, right? It's just brand-new.
Well, it was introduced, I think, to 2014.
Yeah, 2014 as well. And so it's had a little time to, and it's getting re-introduced
as a...
And it's a different Congress.
Were there any hearings?
Yeah.
Are there committee hearings on it, or anything? Do you know?
I honestly don't know.
I'm just wondering how far, well, so what's, what's the problem with having Paul draft a letter, and we all can have some input into it?
That's fine. We want to take it up for vote next month. That's fine.
And you might want to, you know, the Monday city council's on tape, or, they have a great, great presentation.
Something the city manager did?
It's, the interim city manager did, actually. David Hawker presented it, on behalf of the city of staff, you know, having moved on from...
Yeah, I'd like to see what, get a look.
Yeah, this is the first time we've been made aware of it, so yeah, it does look like it was introduced in the last Congress, but, or maybe this is an amendment to this Oregon-California Land Grant Act. Anyway, I would think we have enough time to, you know, approve a letter at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm highly uncomfortable right now about doing an entire scope, because when I have no information outside of this small map. And that could easily, you know, change once I get some more information.
Well, if we, if we voted to do something now, we wouldn't even know what we were approving. Then we're just giving Paul carte blanche to write a letter, and we don't really want to do that. We want to have some input, so let's do a draft, and we'll circulate it. And we'll, if we want to amend it at the next meeting, we'll do it, and we'll get it out after the next meeting.
Okay. That's, yeah. Cool, thank you.
Motion still on the table, or?
No.
We didn't second anything. I don't care.
That's all right.
Well, I had an interesting thing I wanted to share with the board, and Paul. One of the Master Gardener classes I went to a couple weeks ago, they had the professor, that's the turf professor from Oregon State, give a presentation. And it was an interesting presentation, in the fact that he was saying that they've had this 10-year-long study that says that for absorption of nutrients, number one, old-growth forests, number two, was riparian plants, but number three was actively growing turf. And I, I actually approached him during the, during the break, and said, ask him the question, us promoting, having our lawns go dead in the summer, is that the right practice? And he absolutely said no. There's a 10-year study that, and I don't know the study, but he was very specific in saying that, that we should be maintaining our lawns during the summertime, and that they're ranked third of absorbing nutrients. And I just thought...
Did they have number four and five in that, or was it just one, two, and third place, too?
Pardon me?
That's the question I went up...
Well, I'm just telling you that...
I know, I don't contest the...
Absorption of nutrients, I mean, given, given the fact that, outside of having old-growth forests and riparian plants...
Right, two big ones, yeah.
The two big ones, then behind that was a healthy vigorous lawn.
Which, if you're feeding it, I mean, I guess that's where it comes in.
He was saying, you know, making sure that it was, that it was healthy and vigorously growing, and so allowing it to, I asked him specifically, allowing it to go dormant and dead in the, in the summertime, was that the right practice? And he said no.
You know, I don't think we've ever actually said, let your lawn die in the summer. I think we've, we've always been judicious about talking about fertilizers...
Right.
And doing that. You know, I don't think we've ever said there's no value in, in turf. I think that...
Well, I just wanted to say that that was the, I was, because in the past, I think we've promoted, you know, brown lawns are good. Last, last spring, summer, we did, and I was...
I don't remember that promotion, ever. But, but it's good information to be sharing.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I was, you know, it was interesting, because, I mean, he was very specific, and I asked him, you know, whether we should be letting our lawns go brown in the summertime, and he said, that's not the right, right practice.
Well, you know, there's...
For absorption of nutrients.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's a lot of evidence to keeping something alive, and being able to continually absorb nutrients that are, like, otherwise just rotting in, from the dead material, right?
Right, right.
So, that's why I like cover crops in the wintertime for agricultural lands.
I understand all of that. I'm just trying to share information.
Well, no, I'm just making your point for you, I think.
Right.
You know, or continuing in the point, if anything, is that, you know, those are important things, because they, they do suck up nutrients, like clover, you know, like goes after and tries to get the nutrients. So, yeah, that's interesting. I would be interested in what came in fourth and fifth place, you know, if it was just three people, three things in the, and they, they were third, but they, but yeah, I think that any, you know, asphalt is probably the least favorable, you know, and then you kind of work from there. And certainly, the larger, more absorptive materials that need a lot of water, need a lot of nutrients, like a shrub over a small blade of grass, over, you know, just moving up back to old growth, it makes more sense.
Right. Well, it makes sense that, you know, the larger plant materials, the old growth would, you know, certainly absorb the most nutrients. And then he said riparian plants were second, and, you know, a healthy vigorous lawn was third.
Yeah. So, and, and another thing in that is just the healthy soils...
Right.
I think are really what a lot of that might be attributed to, because if you have healthy soil, that's where your microbial degradation occurs. And when you have a healthy old-growth forest, your soils are thick. It's not just that tree that's utilizing all the nutrients.
No, I know.
It's the duff, you know, which is the name for the soils that they're creating. So, you know, yeah, microbial degradation is driving much of that absorption. That's how a lot of the plants are getting the nutrients, they're becoming bioavailable, because the microbes are making them bioavailable. That's why septic system drainfields work, too, you know?
Okay, any other non-agenda items?
That was really interesting.
We still need to talk about the March meeting date.
Correct.
What...
So, just got back word today that the March 18th works really well, or the 5th, or the 16th. The 17th will not work.
What are the 18th and 16th?
You guys missed one. Passover additional.
No, we're still on non-agenda items. Yeah, yeah.
What are the days of the week of that?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Yeah, do you have that? 5th or the 16th?
So, the first Thursday...
Apparently, they'll, they'll all work. But, yeah, 18th worked great, last I heard.
Followed by...
So, I'm not in a position to complain?
I'm good.
The 5th sounds good, if we stay to Thursdays. That, I mean, it's not very far away, but...
Yeah, it has some, at least it's on a Thursday. I mean, it has, makes a lot of sense.
And we're staying away from, I don't know, spring break, I'm sure is the week of the 23rd, but we're staying away from any of that, so.
Let's do the 5th.
Okay.
All right.
Is that good with everyone? Okay.
5th it is.
March 5th. Now, that kind of gets to the public hearing potential process. I mean, that...
This is five weeks.
From right now?
Well, the...
From the 5th to the April meeting.
Oh, yeah. And actually, that's a good thing, in that regard. It gives you more time, yeah. I was gonna say, because, yeah, right now, it seems like, yeah, you're not going to make that next hearing notification by. Yeah, thank you. So, that's still making good sense to say on the 5th?
Yep.
Yeah. Good, we'll set it for March 5th at 6:00 PM in these quarters, for the next, for the March...
Can you do like, an update on the homepage or something?
Yeah, I'll do something like that tomorrow, when we get into that. I wanted to, if, if I can, just read the resolution number that you passed last meeting, moving transfer of material and services to consult, from, to material and services consulting from that service. That would be Resolution 2015-01. It's the first one of the new year, so I have that for you all to sign, but you passed that last time, but if we could get that recorded.
All right. Additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Five minutes per person? Light system, please?
Excited, I couldn't wait, so I'm...
That's good.
Jumped the gun.
We appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you, thank you. Anyway, I just wanted to thank Kent and ask you for that information on that one lake that looks like the board's got all that information on. That would be great, so if you can forward that to me. The other thing I would encourage you all to do is not reinvent the wheel. If somebody has done something that's been successful, even though it may not be exactly like ours, learn from what they learned, engage them. And what I'd recommend is maybe you appoint two board members, along with Paul, and this would go with the three people that engaged you back and gave their comments on the RFP. Do a conference call, ask them some of the questions, so that you make sure when the next RFP goes out, we have the highest degree of success. I mean, engage those people, use the tools that we already have. So, anyway, I want to thank you, and if you can forward that to me, that would be great. The other thing that you didn't mention, you did mention about the election, but I think it's important for everyone in the audience to know, there's three positions that are up for election, position one, two, and three. So, other than that, good discussion tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say? All right. Board comments and announcements. We have an item here, Devil's Lake Family Fishing Frenzy.
On the 28th.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, that's, this will be the second year that the Fish and Wildlife Department is holding that event. It's at Regatta Grounds. We had 200 participants last year. Tying, tying fish and fly, tying flies and throwing them out in a, in a small area, Pend area, where they put about 2,000 rainbow trout, an opportunity for kids to come in, and, and their families to learn about fishing. In fact, I'll put a call-out right now, because I know that the, they were talking about maybe trying to move that, because there's like a sportsman thing happening in Newport. They may be shy on a few volunteers, typically. So, if there's people in the audience, listening audience, at the board, anywhere in North America, for that matter, that want to participate, I would contact me, and I can forward you on to Kristin Clapp, who's running that. It's, it's a fun event, you know, and we've helped set that up, as far as getting the permits and such, and that, last year, as well as this year. So, we've, we've had a hand in this development again. So, pretty fun event, though. So, it's the second Saturday of spring break.
March 28th, 2015.
Fishermen unite.
Any other board comments or announcements? We're adjourned.